Okay, good evening everyone. We'll get started if you could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to the Tanna Riverhead Planning Board meeting. Today is Thursday, August 6, 2020. Before we get started, I would like to welcome our new planning aide, Brian Cunningham, who started a couple of weeks ago. So, welcome aboard, Brian. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, first item on our agenda tonight is a discussion item for 1846 Edwards Avenue for chapter 219. John?
The planning department has received and reviewed a chapter 219 coastal erosion hazard line permit to remove existing bulkhead, woodwalks, decks, and steps, install new bulkhead, excavate in the area west of the dwelling to create additional parking, install new steps, walks, and steps to construct a 300 square foot addition to the existing two-story single-family dwelling for an elevator along with 767 square feet of proposed decks and walkways to make the premises handicap accessible. No dredging or filling will occur on the site. With regard to SECRE, it's an unlisted action. The site is located at 1846 Edwards Avenue in Calhoun. On the north side of Edwards Avenue is in the RA40 zoning use district on a quarter acre parcel. It is presently improved with a two-story single-family dwelling, decking, stairways, and a parking area. The parcel abuts and the access ramp from Edwards Avenue onto the beach for beach access. The existing decks and stairways-
Hey, John, being told you need to speak up some more. Keep closing the microphone.
The existing decks and stairways currently on-site are not ADA compliant as they are now, being three foot when proposed is five feet. The decks will be raised around for better access to the home and extend around the beach side of the home. An elevator is proposed so the homeowner can access his home and additional parking will be required. With regards to zoning, the subject parcel is okay with Niari 40 zoning use district, which permits single-family dwellings. Currently, the applicant does need to go before the zoning board of appeals for imperious surface coverage, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, and rear yard setbacks. The applicant has also received a permit from the New York State DEC for title wetlands. The application has been referred to the consulting engineer in comments of forthcoming. At this time, staff recommends that the planning board classify the action as enlisted, assume lead agency, without the need for coordinated review, and issue a negative declaration for the proposed action. As passing a SECRE resolution will allow the DVA to make their determination on the balance for this application. And we also recommend that no further approval be given until the DVA grants their determination.
John, is that an access point for four-wheel drives on the beach right there?
Yes. Yes.
So, will the construction interfere with any of the access?
That's something I can ask the applicant.
Just wondering if it can be done at a certain time of the year where it wouldn't be an issue.
I know-
John, can you hear us?
I can. How you doing, Mr. Chairman? Members of the board? No, the construction will not block the access. It's actually, it's a very wide access point down to the beach. And during the summertime, they're not allowed to use the access point for four-wheel drive during the day. It's only in the evenings and there wouldn't be construction anyway. So even if there were temporary blockage, you're not allowed down there on the beach by town code when construction would be happening. And I just want to say, Mr. Flood's report, we agree with it. He gave you a good synopsis. This is an odd application. Mr. Borsy, who I believe is on the line, is handicapped, and the whole purpose of this is to allow him to utilize his house. The only reason that he's sort of going wall-to-wall or property line-to-property line with a deck and an elevator is the only way he can possibly access the beach is through decks along this property. And so, the whole purpose is to make it handicap accessible. And it took him almost two and a half years to get through the DEC, so we're hoping that you folks will be a little bit kinder.
Okay. The elevator, is it a true elevator for different stories? Or is it elevated more like a lift just to get from the ground level up to the deck?
No, no, it's a true elevator to get to the different stories in the house.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
I'm just want to make sure that the deck and the bulkhead are not going to be a hindrance. Are they any further waterways than the existing bulkhead? I don't want to impede the public's ability to use the beach.
Oh, no, you're not. If you go down and look, I've been there many times. There's no, there's a very large beach in front of this house. This deck will not impede that at all. I mean, there's a tremendous beach in front of this house.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. Is figure three the current parking area for the owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay. What about after the elevator is built? That's the same area where the elevator is built, correct? What about the surface?
There's a bulkhead along the property right now. I mean, it says proposed bulkhead, but there's a bulkhead along the property. Let's see. That spot, there's one spot. If you look at figure six, where in Mr. Flood's report, that is the existing bulkhead, that's the existing parking spot. They are coming out slightly, but you're still going to have parking in that area. I mean, there's not a lot of parking.
Well, my question is, if that's a handicap parking spot now, the surface, are we going to, it doesn't note it, but are we going to improve the surface with asphalt or concrete?
Oh, no, that says private parking.
That's what I'm saying, but still, he has to exit the vehicle to get into the elevator to access the house, correct?
He would, but I don't know that we would regulate, I don't know that town regulates private handicap parking on your own property.
I mean, my concern is that he's in the sand.
Well, it's not, if you, it's hard pack. I mean, I parked there yesterday. It's hard packed right now. I mean, he may, I'm assuming that he's calling it for gravel parking for drainage purposes. But, you know, I don't think that you can get out of there with a wheelchair and roll around the way that is right now. That's hard. I mean, very hard.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
No.
Okay. We have a resolution tonight for the SECRE, so shouldn't be any issues. Right, John?
Yep.
Okay. That's it, Sean. Thank you.
All right, I'm excited in here. Thank you for voting on that. Have a great evening, gentlemen.
Okay, next item on the agenda number two, Verizon Wireless at Waiting River 4.
Okay, so the planning department has received and reviewed a site plan application to upgrade an existing public utility wireless communication facility, including installing three RR8 units on an existing 102.4-foot monopole. The changes will be made on a 2.20 acre parcel located at- The existing changes will be made on a 2.20 acre parcel located at 6232 Middle Country Road within the RB80 zoning use district. The existing monopole sits behind East End Market on the northern side of Middle Country Road. With regards to SECRE, it is an unlisted action. Regarding the RF analysis, the RF analysis analyzed the maximum calculated ORF level from the combination of proposed and existing antenna operations at this site to be 0.20 percent of the FCC's general population limit. There are no modeled areas on any accessible ground-level working surfaces related to the existing antennas that exceed the FCC's occupational or general population exposure limit at this site. The structural analysis report analyzed the structural integrity and tower stress level of the existing monopole, and they have determined that the tower and foundation has sufficient capacity to carry the proposed load configuration. At this time, no modifications will be required to the monopole. Staff recommends that the planning board assume lead agency, issue a negative declaration, and grant administrative approval. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, what exactly are the changes they make?
They're only installing an additional three R radio remote heads.
Okay.
That's the only addition to the monopole.
And who do we have on the line with us tonight?
I believe it is Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T.
Who do we have there?
Matt Sabelbaum.
Who?
Matt Sabelbaum, the attorney for the applicant.
And the FCC compliance, that took into account all the carriers?
Yes.
And the structural is stamped by a PE?
Yep, stamped by New York State license PE.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Okay. Yeah, I don't know if he can hear us. Can you hear us?
I can hear. No questions on my part.
This is the, I brought up his meetings held in this-
Oh, that's the Steeple Church. This is, that's the next application. Yeah, that's a different application. This is one's in Waiting River.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Okay, so we'll bring it up on the resolutions.
Okay.
Thank you.
He's also on for the next-
Oh, he's the next one too?
Yeah, the next one, Old Steeple Church.
Okay, so item three, Verizon Wireless at Old Steeple Church.
Okay, so on June 4th, this application was brought before the planning board for a preliminary discussion. Staff recommended at the time that no discussion be held until the applicant submitted a revised agricultural data statement, which they have to date. And also submitted a, and also submit an application to New York State shippo and Landmark Preservation Committee and Architectural Review Board. On June 24th, 2020, the ARB reviewed the above referenced project with the site plan and elevations last revised February 13th, 2020 with material samples. The ARB has approved samples. On June 25th, planning staff emailed Richard Wines, chairman of the Landmark Preservation Committee. He concluded that Old Steeple Church is neither a town landmark nor in a town historic district, therefore the LPC has no jurisdiction. Mr. Wines further stated that the building, however, was declared eligible by New York State shippo to be on the National Register of Historic Places, so any state or federal, so any state or federal funding that's involved, they would need to review this project. In a letter dated April 26, 2019, New York State shippo had determined that there will be no direct or visual adverse effect on the historic properties. However, they recommended that the applicant ensure that the reflective character of the proposed board replacements match the existing paint, width, and construction details as the historic materials. On June 4th, the planning board did raise concerns with the proposed applications regarding high radio frequency, the posting of signage, and the use of the basement in the meetings. Since then, the applicant has provided the following answers to the questions. With regard to the high FCC analysis, the FCC MPE limit has been constructed in such a manner that continuous human exposure to ORF emissions up to and including 100 percent of the MPE limit is acceptable and safe. The analysis in this case shows that the maximum calculated ORF level from the combined of the proposed and existing antenna operations at the site is 19.4360 percent of the MCC MPE limit. In other words, the worst-case calculated ORF level from the antenna operations is more than five times below the limit established as safe for continuous human exposure to the ORF emissions from antennas. Regarding all signage, all warning signs will be posted in accordance with FCC regulations. And prior to the issuance of a build impairment, the applicant will need to receive a farm commercial permit to construct. At this time, planning staff recommended the planning board hereby declare the proposed project and listed action under SECRE, assume lead agency, and issue negative declaration and grant administrative approval for the project. Does the board have any questions?
No, we got the structural signed off by a PE, right?
Correct.
And is there a generator on that site?
I do, they're proposing a gen, I believe they're proposing a generator.
For this?
Yes.
And how many carriers are on the site?
Including Verizon, there is about four.
Are they going to be sharing the generator?
I do not know the answer to that question. I can ask the applicant's attorney.
Matt?
Verizon is not proposing a generator for this site, actually. I'm not sure if any of the other carriers have one.
Okay, so there's not one?
What's the height of the antenna from the ground?
The antenna is actually inside the steeple itself.
I understand. How many feet is that? Do we know?
I'm not sure. I can pull up the plan.
Average church steeple.
Well, it's not changing from what it is now, right?
No, it's not changing.
The height of the antenna is not changing.
Okay, the height of the steeple is not changing?
No, the height of the steeple is not changing. It's all going to be contained inside the steeple, so there will be no visual impact.
John? I saw all the things that they're adding. Are they taking anything away?
No.
They're just adding all these-
They're just adding.
Just to note of record, Mr. Chairman, I've noticed that as I've done site surveys on these sites, they all have generators, every one of them. I mean, someone may own it, but they all have generation, because if they lose power, they've got to come up and, you know, and get the site up and running, so.
Is there one on this one?
That one I did not go to, but the one that we had in question at our last meeting on Fresh Pond Road, I did look at that as a generator.
And so-
It's internal, but it's there.
I just, I'd like to know if they, you know, some of these sites that are back to us, if they have a generator, did they get approval to install it?
Okay.
And, you know, is it size for all the carriers? So instead of having four generators on one site, they can share one generator?
Okay.
So, I guess it doesn't apply to this one, but it's a good point. That as we review these, because we get quite a few of them, is to find out if there is a generator and if they ever had approval for them. Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, we'll bring it up under the resolutions. Thank you. Okay, next item is Glass Residence, chapter 219 amendment. This one is John also.
Yes.
This is the one that changed on us, right, John?
Yeah, this was the one that changed from their previous approval. At the last meeting, we did, under resolution 2020-043, at our July 6th meeting, we did grant their extension of their chapter 219 permit. While we were awaiting on Vinny's comments for the project, and to date, we have received Vinny's comments. And his first comment was that the site topography consists of moderate to severe slopes. With that said, we recommend that the stormwater runoff resulting from the proposed improved areas of the site, roof areas, driveway be managed and contained on-site in a manner that would conform to the design of the standards of the zoning code. And his second, his second comment was that they would have to quantify the amount of disturbance they're going to have on their property. So if they were to disturb more than an acre, they would have to apply for a SWIP from town engineer. So when both of those were made conditions in the resolution.
Now, on basis of that fact that they have to define the drainage area, do they have to submit a new plan?
If they determine that, yes, everything will be covered under New York State Speed East General Permit.
Yeah, but I'm just, as I'm asking, Vinny had asked to show the drainage.
Yes, they would have to show the drainage.
We have to get a new plan.
Correct.
Does that mean they still have to include the resolution?
You can, I can stick with that.
The intention was that they show that in their script.
If they need one.
If they need one. I don't have that between the two of you.
They have to quantify on their site plan if they're going to disturb more than an acre as a condition of approval. And if they're going to disturb more than an acre, then when they're conducting their SWIP, they would, they would show the drainage.
Well, the still site plan has to be stamped by the chairman, right?
Yes.
Signed, yeah?
Signed, yes.
So did you share those comments with the applicant? Or were they on the line?
Peter Dinowski, we talked back and forth along with Dick Ayers, and he- I talked with the applicant's attorney, Peter Dinowski, and he had no issues with the conditions of approval.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the board?
Nope.
All right, thank you, John. Okay, next item on the agenda, item five, Hotel Indigo.
Good evening, everybody. Jefferson Murfree. The application before you this evening is a site plan application for the Hotel Indigo. They have been proposing a sanitary connection to the sewer district for well over 10 years. And this is the last step in that process, is to get a pump station in order to connect the subject property into the Riverhead Sewer District. If the site plan application is approved, the existing standard septic tank and rings would be abandoned, and the sanitary overflow from the existing hotel and restaurant will be treated by the Riverhead Sewer Treatment Facility. So obviously, this is a benefit for everybody involved. Most of the equipment that is associated with the pump station will be constructed below grade. The most visible elements above grade will be a five-foot tall crane, one light pole, and a six-foot perimeter chain link fence. The subject property is located at the Hotel Indigo, located at 1822 West Main Street, identified as tax ID number 60118-2-2.2, and its own destination retail center. If you're familiar with the property, Tanger Malt is located a million to the east of the subject property. The proposed pump station would be located approximately 10 feet off of that property line. The proposed site plan application is an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE, with coordination being optional and not recommended. The applicant has a current application pending before the Suffolk County Health Department, and they need a secret determination by the lead agency in order to complete their approval process. It is recommended that planning board assert lead agency status without coordinated review, and staff further recommends that a lead agency issue a negative declaration. The proposed pump station sanitary flow has been reviewed by the sewer district and finds that the calculations are accurate and would accommodate not only the existing development, but a proposed third-floor expansion of the hotel and a small 9,600 square foot retail building. Just a couple of minor site plan issues that need to be clarified and fixed. One is that we need to get an updated title report. We can do that prior to the signature of the Mylar. The town engineer, his only comment was if the development exceeds an acre, it needs a SWIP, but there's no way this development exceeds an acre. It's approximately less than 1,000 square feet of disturbance. But we are requiring that the applicant prepare a soil erosion sediment control plan, just to make sure that during its construction, that nothing runs off of the subject property into Tanger Malt's property. A couple of the minor issues, the height, location of the lighting fixture needs to be detailed on the revised site plan. We need to get a new availability letter from the sewer district, and that can be done prior to the issuance of a building permit. I spoke with Michael Reichel about it, that, and he said he was fine with that as a condition. We need to get a revised plan showing soil erosion sediment control and an updated title report. And that's it.
Okay, so we're going to do the SECRE tonight and then schedule a public hearing?
That is correct, and we can do that for the next planning board meeting.
Okay. The lift station, when it's all completed, is that going to be maintained and operated by the sewer district or Hotel Indigo?
Hotel Indigo.
So they'll have, they'll own that and have to maintain it?
They're constructing their on-site facilities. The sewer district gets to the site and then from the site, the conveyance is by the sewer district, but on-site is all the developer's obligation.
Okay. Are they required to have any certified operators to maintain that lift station, or is it required to be, and again, it's probably the DEC that regulates that, but I'm just curious if they mandated to have someone visit it every day or how that operates?
I'm familiar with, there's a lift station at the old PC Richards property, you know, these are on-site pump stations.
So it's not required?
Those more familiar with this than I am, and I don't believe they require daily inspection or maintenance. They're a package device that comes-
And they have alarms.
And they have alarms, and they do have to have maintenance, and Michael is, you know, will follow up on it and make sure that they're being operated and maintained, but it's not a Riverhead facility, the sewage gets to the Riverhead facility.
Okay, and this has been in the making for 10 years?
It was a long complicated problem because the sewer district tried to go in the state right of the expressway, and they denied that, so then it had to go through the back of Tanger, and that involved negotiations with Tanger, the town, and condemnation, and there was a settlement between the owner of the property and the Tanger organization and the town, and the Indigo organization has paid for all of that. There's a state grant law as well, because it's taking well out of the water.
Okay.
I have one question. On the plan, it mentions that the future development of a parcel across from the existing hotel. Do you know where that is? hotel, do you know where that is?
Uh, Marty, are, are, okay.
Yes, I am.
Is that the ninety-six hundred square foot retail building he's referring to?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, basically, what we have is the engineer is Lou Caligeris, and what Lou has done, um, the Indigo properties, the principals, they own multiple properties. There is the hotel property, the property directly adjacent eastward on, um, on Route twenty-five, which we had previously put in a site plan for, that's being held up right now, basically due to economics, they're just not proceeding with it at this time. And they also purchased the property directly across the street on the corner of River Road and twenty-five. That would be the north, uh, it would be the northwest corner of River Road and twenty-five. Um, that property, they would have the opportunity to bring sewer from that parcel to increase the flow on that piece, uh, as a future consideration. They, there are no applications pending for that, there's nothing planned at this time, but what Mr. Caligeris has done is he's looked ahead and said if he's going to develop it, uh, the pump station, he would make sure that he had additional, uh, flow and requirements so that in the future, if there was the opportunity presented itself, it would be designed into the project. It's not much of a difference to pick up that amount of flow when you're doing a pump station, um, so that's why he designed it that way and included it in the calculation.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question, because I saw it included. I just didn't know where the property was.
Correct, yes, directly across the street.
Marty, do you know how tall the wall is between the hotel and Tanger?
At that location, it's approximately twelve feet. So, anything to do with this pump station is, you know, not only is it twelve feet lower, but the area adjacent to Tanger is the back of the buildings where they have their compactors and, you know, they have parking back there that I think some employees use, but quite frankly, the parking back there is generally pretty barren, uh, other than the really, really busy times of year. So it's really sort of their back door, their trash compactors, et cetera, are up against, you know, actually close to our property line here are a number of them. And, uh, then they have their retaining wall that drops off, so we're down very low compared to them.
And just for the board's education, uh, I did scale the, um, the location of the proposed pump station to the closest building in Tanger Malt's property, and it's a hundred feet away.
Okay.
I think you nailed it, Jeff, when you said it's basically a win-win for everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Get those septics into the sewer district.
Yep.
The parcel across the street that may be hooked up in the future, would that require another sewer district extension?
Right, that parcel's not in the boundary of the district at this time, so they're just sizing a pump station.
No, I understand, but it would require the whole process for them to be added?
Absolutely, it has to maybe add it to the taxing jurisdiction of the district.
Okay.
So, uh, we have two resolutions on one for, um, the secret determination, uh, for your consideration this evening, as well as the schedule for a public hearing for the first meeting in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, Riverhead Town Homes. That's Greg, right?
Uh, yes, it'd be Greg. Yeah, I think that, I think that may be him. All right, Anthony, can you hear us?
That's still Marty.
That's, that's Marty.
That's Marty.
Marty, we're, we're, not on this one, so we'll come back to you.
Hang on, keep the guy in.
Sounds like a song.
Anthony, can you hear us?
Is that Anthony?
Yes, it is, yep.
Anthony.
Don't go off.
Don't leave us, Anthony.
Mac, Anthony.
Yes, oh, there we go. Gotta get some lights on.
Anthony, can you hear us?
Is it right now?
Yes.
Okay. Anthony, can you hear us?
Yes, he's connected. There he is.
All right, hello, how are you?
All right, Anthony, just making sure you're with us.
Yep.
Uh, so the planning department has received and reviewed a site plan application proposing to construct a two-story, three-unit townhouse development on a vacant parcel of land along with related associated improvements, including parking, lighting, landscaping, stormwater management, and new sewer and water connections. The proposed building has a footprint of one thousand twenty-nine square feet and a total of two thousand fifty-eight square feet of floor area. Uh, the floor plan shows for each of the proposed townhome units, which share common walls with each other, but floor plans include a kitchen, dining room, living room, two bathrooms, and two bedrooms. The two bedrooms are proposed to be one hundred and one square feet and eighty-seven square feet respectively, which both comply with the minimum size for bedrooms per New York State Building Code. The subject parcel located at forty-five Third Street is a six thousand one hundred and twelve square foot or zero point one-four acre parcel located on the south side of Third Street within the Riverhead Historic District. The parcel is presently vacant and is moderately wooded. The surrounding area is predominantly of residential character with a number of single-family and multifamily dwellings, as well as offices which are operating out of converted single-family residences, and the property is zoned DC four. Pursuant to Town Code two twenty-five dash eleven B nine, the proposed action is a type one action due to its location within the Riverhead Historic District, and as such, it will be treated as a mandatory type one action revolving mandatory coordinator review with involved agencies. Involved agencies are the Town of Riverhead Water District, Town Sewer District, Building Department, the Riverhead Zoning Board of Appeals, the Architectural Review Board, Landmarks Preservation Commission, Suffolk County Planning Commission, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, CHIPO, and well, as well as PSEG. Uh, staff has prepared a resolution to classify the action as a type one action and initiate the secret coordination request. Um, the applicant has since provided me a full EAF, which will allow us to initiate that coordinator review. Uh, the project does require several variances from Town Code, uh, so they will need to go to ZBA. Um, they need, they're seeking a relief for one parking stall, they're seeking relief for a thirteen-foot drive aisle where twenty-four-foot wide is required, uh, they're exceeding the maximum impervious coverage, the proposed is eighty-two percent, maximum in the DC four is sixty percent, and they need side yard relief. They're proposing a seven-foot setback required as ten. Uh, denial letter will be issued to the applicant. Um, the Zoning Board of Appeals cannot act on the application until SECRE is completed, um, so they will need to wait during that time until they can be, get their relief from the ZBA.
Are the three, I'm sorry, Greg, are the three units as a break?
Yes, the, the only, they're, they're seeking dimension and relief, it's, they're not in any sort of sanitary or density relief.
Well, there's a sewer district there, correct?
Correct, correct. Um, as far as parking, the site plan currently proposes an asphalt parking area to the south of the proposed building, which would be accessed via, from Third Street via a thirteen-foot wide driveway, and it calls for a total of four parking stalls, including one handicapped accessible stall and aisle. Parking stalls are proposed as ten-foot by twenty-foot, and the accessible aisle is eight-foot by twenty-foot, which all comply with Town Code. Um, as far as consistency, consistency with the surrounding area, as I stated, the project is located within the Riverhead Historic District, as well as the Second and Ostrander National Register Historic District, and as such, will be referred to the Landmarks Preservation Commission as well as CHIPO. Uh, planning staff will defer to the LPC and CHIPO, do it for their comments based on their expertise in the historical review, and that will be, the coordination will be handled during the secret process. Uh, as I stated, they will, it is, the parcel is located within the bit, district of the, the boundaries of the sewer district, and will propose connection. Uh, it is located within the Riverhead Water District and will be using, utilizing public water for their collection. Um, the site plan does propose one small refuse container area for each of the units, which is proposed on the eastern side of the property. Pursuant to the town's contract with its refuse collector, the subject property would actually be eligible for town garbage collection. Uh, the cutoff for a multifamily residential unit is three units, so they are able to use town garbage. If they had four units, they would be ineligible, and they would need, need to retain a commercial carter. Um, one thing is they just need to provide details of the proposed screening or fencing for their, uh, refuse collection area. In terms of exterior lighting, site plan proposes a combination of sixteen wall-mounted LED light fixtures and twenty-four LED lighted bollards. The wall-mounted LED fixtures are proposed at a height of six feet eight inches above grade, while the bollards are three feet six inches above grade. Both types of lighting fixtures comply with the three thousand degree Kelvin color temperature as required, required by Article XLIX of the Town Code. Site plan does propose landscaping improvements, including one American Linden tree and a landscaped bed at the street frontage, two cherry trees at the street frontage, as well as six azalea bushes, as well as a row of nineteen arborvitae's along the western property boundary. There is currently no vegetative buffer proposed on the eastern boundary, however, there is a six-foot stockade fence. Um, details of the proposed irrigation and landscaping maintenance must be provided, as the water usage for the proposed landscaping will factor into their Riverhead Water District approvals. Um, the project will be referred to Suffolk County Planning Commission as, because it is located within five hundred feet of Roanoke Avenue, which is the county right-of-way. Again, that'll be handled through the secret process. Um, we're waiting on fire marshal comments and attorney comments as far as their title report. Uh, for the next steps, the planning board will, has a resolution before them to initiate the secret coordination process. Once that thirty days is over, the board can issue a secret determination and then allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to act on their application.
ARB involved?
ARB will be involved as well as LPC.
So, the fire marshal's comments, um, I mean, how far along should this go without the fire marshal's comments?
Um, I've referred the plans, I mean, we can get them before we get to any public hearing. Um, you know, I would, I would think they would just need to meet fire code, uh, but I will follow up with the fire marshal and get their comments. They have been short-staffed for the last month, we have had one of the fire marshals who's been out, so we had another one retire, so he's been stretched to the, stretched to the limits, but I will follow up with him to get those comments, short order.
Okay. Um, similar question with the, with the water availability. Um, you know, it seems as though the water district is in nearly crisis mode nowadays, and we continue to get these projects in that require hookups to the town water system, and I'm not sure, I'm comfortable any longer pushing these projects through, um, without a solid letter from the water district superintendent saying that they could serve these proposed, uh, buildings or developments, um, at periods of high demand. Um, you know, I, we, we have to put the brakes on somewhere, and it's, it's a big issue in town, uh, water emergencies, water restrictions, lack of infrastructure improvements, um, so I'm really not comfortable moving these, these projects forward without solid information from the water district superintendent. I don't necessarily have any objections to the project, but it's, it's, it's a situation that has evolved over probably the last ten or plus years in, in town, and I, I think we're, we're doing a disservice to the town if we just keep rubber-stamping these things without, without the town, uh, investing in infrastructure.
I'll second that. Right, um, I noticed on the, uh, there's what they're calling a WD tall, six-foot WD fence, what's a WD fence?
I believe that's wood.
Wood what?
Wood, W D.
Stockade?
Yeah, stockade, I believe.
Okay. Okay, 'cause on the west side, they're doing the same thing, but there's also an existing stockade fence on the property on the west side. Two fences.
Yeah, but they're putting arborvitae's up against it on the west side, right?
Correct.
So there'll be, there'll be two sets of, of, uh, fences.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a fence on the eastern and western, are you talking, is it there?
If you look on the west side, you see a six-foot tall, and by here, that existing stockade fence on the property.
Um, Anthony, can you hear us?
Yeah, I, I, it was hard to make out exactly what you were saying, you were asking about the fence.
On the west side.
So on the west side, it appears as though there's an, there's an existing wood fence, and then it looks like a proposed fence as well?
Uh, right, yeah, we were gonna, we were gonna add a fence, I mean, we could remove the existing fence, um-
Is it a disrepair?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Is it a disrepair, the existing?
Disrepair.
Um, I think, I believe it's more of like a split mile fence, um, it's, it's not a, it's, I mean, it's not in great shape, um, but the, you know, the lots are a little overgrown right now, definitely needs to be cleared, so, um, I mean, if we can retain that fence, we, we will. Um, I, I think we're just proposing it as, uh, if needed, we, we can add, you know, we would add the fence in.
I mean, i- is that something that could possibly be coordinated with the neighbor? I mean, you know, instead of having two fences, just speak with the neighbor and just do one on the property line?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we're willing, we're willing to do that, I mean, you know, we're willing to really work with the board on, on anything and any requests, and then we, we look at this as a, you know, a way to add, uh, you know, to help that, that neighborhood, and, um, you know, my, my client is, uh, you know, willing to have any discussions as, as needed.
I don't-
That's fine.
I don't have any objection to the fence, I just, it just seems a little strange, you could have two fences right next to each other, same, same type, stockade.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, if that fence is in, is in, you know, repair, possible repair, then I, I would say it would be better to, to take that as an option, um, instead of removing it. Um, it might have just been more of a, you know, a, a thought of a proposed fence.
Perhaps at, at a later date, you could let Greg know what the condition is of the fence.
Sure, I can look into that.
Yeah, well, we can, we, we can work that out.
And that, one more question.
Um, I'm sorry.
You know, we know what's, that there is an existing house on the west property, but what about on the east property? Is there anything there on the east side?
Um, yes, there is, it's a little more, uh, it's further away from the property, there's one that's pretty close on the right-hand side. Uh, give you, give me one second, I'll just, let me check.
Yeah, there is, uh-
Yeah, it's the aerial, figure one in the report.
Yeah, there are houses on both sides.
Right.
The, the western house is closer to the property line, the eastern house is set, set back a little further from the property line.
And I'm, I'm, yes, but it's, uh, like a ranch house, you know, so.
It's just not shown, so.
The, I, I can revise the plan and provide that. Um, I, the reason, uh, the owner of this property owns the house to the west, and I had that, he's, that was the survey, was the two lots that he had surveyed together, um, but I couldn't show that, that house. Um, I just didn't have it surveyed.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, also, on the condition of the fence, I'm looking at a picture, um, it's a four-foot stockade fence, um, I mean, it's a, a four-foot, uh, thick fence, and it looks like it's in pretty good condition. Um, I would say, you know, if it has to be repaired from any of the, uh, removal of the branches or debris that's on the site, you know, we, we could do that, sort of add to the case.
Did the board have any other questions?
No.
I also mentioned just, uh, I, I, um, I did file, are we filing the application for water in highway? Um, Greg asked, you know, we spoke to Greg, and, uh, he asked that we do that, so we are, we are moving forward with that, so, um, you know, once I have the water availability letter, I can provide that to the board.
Well, I don't, I don't know, we know the water's available there.
Yeah.
It goes beyond water availability.
Okay.
It goes, it, it goes into, can they service more and more of these homes during peak demand, because it continues to be an issue. It comes up in more and more lately. The, the town, it just hasn't invested in the infrastructure. And it's a problem. We keep, we keep approving these things, making it worse and worse and worse, and I just, I, I can't do it anymore, or we shouldn't do it anymore. And again, it's not an objection to your project, this is more of a, a town issue, you know, being able to provide the, you know, infrastructure to, to what you're proposing.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to speak with the water district and, uh, you know, discuss that concern, and, I mean, I guess we can, we can chase that down a little bit further.
I think Greg will probably, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna reach, they're gonna get the secret coordination, I'll reach out to Mr. Mancini, and, uh, you know, we can address those concerns.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
All right, thanks, Anthony.
Thank you, guys. I'll work.
Okay, next, uh, application is eight thirty-six East Main Street.
All right, so this- All right, so this is just gonna be a very brief recap. As you recall, we are, the planning board had granted preliminary site plan approval for an application known as 836 East Main Street, located at 836 East Main Street, Riverhead. That preliminary approval granted approval of a site plan application to develop a vacant .77 acre parcel with a mixed-use building consisting of 6,558 square feet of ground-level retail, and 6,780 square feet of second-floor residential apartments consisting of eight dwelling units ranging in size from 532 square feet through 980 square feet, along with parking, landscaping, lighting, stormwater, sanitary improvements. That preliminary approval was granted with several conditions, one being that the site plan be revised to comply with fire marshal comments, spoke to identifying the color slats of the vinyl dumpster enclosure, revising some lighting fixtures to comply with town code, as well as ARB comments, and then removing some architectural, some elements from the elevation drawings, including business names, and to call out the colors. Those conditions have been met, so I have prepared a final site plan approval resolution for the board to consider at this meeting.
Okay.
I just had one comment, I made it at the last time we were here, and that is, we don't have an existing site plan, what's on the site now?
Nothing, it's a vacant.
No, no, that's Billy's lot, are they not?
No.
No, this is a vacant parcel.
It's across the street from 821 Apartments.
Yeah, this is on the northeast corner of East Main Street and.
Oh, okay.
I think you're thinking of.
Yeah, I think it, this was the one where the, during the public hearing, we relocated the entrance from Prospect onto East Main Street. So, that's it for that one?
Yes.
It's a public hearing.
Can you just wait for? So, next item is a public hearing for Bates &amp; Barrels for a portable self-contained firearm testing range at 1315 West Main Street in Riverhead.
So, we have Marty Soluski for the applicant, and then since this is a public hearing, we have to determine which of the people in the waiting room are here to speak.
Okay.
You'll ask them to raise their hand if they need to speak at any point, because I'm gonna have a mute. They're all connected, but the only one to speak is.
Let's wait till they're all connected.
Yeah. I believe everybody's in. There are Chip, Marty Soluski, and Charles Cuddy, are the applicants. Charles Cuddy, and I don't know who the attorney is.
Charles Cuddy.
Okay, he's coming in, he's on mute now.
Charles Cuddy is for the next public hearing.
Okay, that's right, I'm aware of your public hearing, but I'm for the next one.
Okay, see, my apologies.
Okay, Marty, so why don't you take it from here, and then we'll get into any comments?
Sure. Prior to starting, there's one of the other people, Oscar, that's connected, he's the adjacent property owner, he's here with us, and he's been waiting a while, I was hoping he could just make his comment first to the board, would that be okay?
Sure.
My name is Oscar Armaya, I am a neighbor, director of Bates &amp; Barrels.
Can't hear him.
Can't hear him.
Marty, do you have a microphone?
Wait, I'll take your. I'll have him come to this one, over here.
Hey, my name is Oscar Armaya, I am a neighbor, director of Bates &amp; Barrels. I've been supporting the project, and I want to say that I never hear anything, I'm always in my backyard, and I never hear like a gunshot, and I can barely hear a very bad leader if I like a close to the fence, but I always went with my kids outside on the yard. I also had a dog, and she never like bark, or she never hear anything, and if I inside of the house, I'm not able to hear anything, so, that's my kind of.
Okay, Oscar, do you, you own the property and you live there?
Yeah, I'm the owner.
And you live there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, planning board, for allowing us to do that, so Oscar can return home to his wife, kids, and dog. Basically, I just wanna do a very brief summary. As far as the overall project, the history of it, we started the project approximately a year ago, a little bit over a year ago. During that time, we received DEC approval, CAC approval. We then did hit a bit of a holdup when we submitted for a building permit, and we were referred to the zoning board for an interpretation, which we'll refer to briefly later. The request for the ZBA interpretation happened after we filed for a building permit and a fire prevention permit. Subsequent to that, they told us that we required the interpretation, and we did go to the zoning board, we received that interpretation. In that interim period, the fire marshal did provide their approval and their initial permit, and then after that, we were notified after the zoning board that we were required to go for a site plan. This isn't a permanent structure, so we weren't aware that a site plan would be required, or we thought it would have been an administrative review. As, with regard to the zoning board and the use of the property, the zoning board reviewed the property, and they have confirmed that the current business is a permitted use within the zoning, and that the container is an accessory use permitted in conjunction with this use. So, the use of this property, the installation of this, at this location, is clearly established by the zoning board of appeals who has precedent on these matters. As far as the use itself is concerned, it was very clear during the zoning board meeting that this is not a public shooting range, it's not a range. There are ranges in Calverton, there are ranges in Medford, there are other locations where people go to utilize a range for, you know, practice with their firearms. This location is not a public range. What it is used for, it's used for testing, the owner purchases and refurbishes and sells firearms. It's also used for sales, for people that are purchasing firearms to try out the different types of firearms they're looking at to make a selection, as well as instruction and training of safe handling once somebody does obtain a firearm. The, as far as safety is concerned, frankly, this is the safest place to discharge a firearm in the town of Riverhead. The container range is engineered specifically for this purpose, including all different types of rounds. It is engineered that way, it is always occupied with somebody from the facility here, the doors are shut down and locked, it's completely secured inside, unlike other ranges where, you know, you take other ranges that are outdoor ranges, you could have people that inadvertently fire, miss the background, and there are possibly the rounds, you know, going off of the property. That does not happen here, this is an engineered facility specifically for this purpose. The last item is with regard to noise. Subsequent to our previous discussion, we did submit the information from the manufacturer when they did the testing of the facility prior to releasing it, and it does indicate that it is in compliance with the town noise ordinance. I had also provided a certification letter, we did our own testing here, we did some initial testing with a handheld device, and then we, after that, utilized a more sophisticated device that we have, the owner maintains it, he wants to monitor it himself also, and we had confirmed that there is no issue with noise, as noted previously by the adjacent property owner, they barely hear it. I do believe that a few of the planning board members were on the property, and I believe some rounds may have been in use within the container at that time, and you may have heard for yourself that the noise itself is really nil. When we did the one test, which I have a video of, they have, they have, on the baseline of the video, of the monitor, they give you a range rating, that's something that you're familiar with, like, you know, loud traffic, conversation, one of the things they have on is quiet library, and when we did the test, I have it on the video, every time a round went off, it registered quiet library, quiet library. The rounds, when they were fired, we didn't even get up to 60. So, there is no noise issue, there is no safety issue, there is no use issue associated with this. We thought it would have been administrative, I know there's a little bit of delay with the whole zoning thing that we had to go through, but we're certainly at a point now where we're hoping to get past this and get our approval in hand as quickly as possible. And we'd be happy to answer any questions, or if anybody else from the public's gonna comment first prior to you asking us anything.
So, what are the hours of operation for Bates &amp; Barrels?
I'm here with Tom Newman, who is one of the owners of the property, and I will let him address that.
Right now, we're open from 10:30 to 6:00 PM most days during the week.
And those hours would be the hours that the container may be used?
Those are, yeah, that's, we've been operating, you know, the range on a limited basis, just because, you know, with all the, you know, the stuff that's going on in the world with COVID restrictions, stuff like that, we have been, you know, using the range, so, and that, it's been consistent with the hours at this time.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
No, I went there to see the operation, and I pretty much agree with what Marty said, you really can't hear it, it's state of the art, there's only one instructor and one shooter, it's not like a bank of rose, it's the Ferrari of shooting ranges, and I think it's well done.
I'll second that motion, because I visited the site as well, and very impressed with everything that's being done, and the way it was handled, the way it was designed.
I also visited the site, and I think there was a firing going on in Trail when I was there, and the noise was super minimal then, but nothing at all.
Okay, now, is there anyone from the public that's on there that wants to speak? If they could raise their hand on the conference call, it's hard to tell if anyone wants to speak. Did anyone signal?
Everybody could like also, just for a moment?
Yeah, maybe for a minute.
I can tell that they're allowed to unmute the bill.
Okay, so, is there anyone that's waiting there that wants to speak on this, this site plan application at this public hearing? Anyone that's on our screen? You can unmute yourself, I don't see anybody signifying that they want to speak.
And, woman in the back is here for.
For this one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, anyone that's here in the public that wants to come up and comment, please come up to the podium, no? No? Okay.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second to motion?
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Bates &amp; Barrels portable firearm testing container, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Just to clarify from the board, would you like me to prepare an administrative approval resolution now for the upcoming planning board meeting, for the Bates &amp; Barrels?
Yeah, we didn't have any public comment, we didn't get anything by mail, right, Carissa? Okay, I'm fine with that. Next meeting. Okay, next public hearing is 1535 Route 58 LLC, application to demolish a residence and construct a car wash. Jefferson, this was yours?
Marty Soluski is here to present the application. Marty did submit revised plans to address the comments from the June 15th, I believe it's the June 15th, planning board meeting, as you call, we had a number of issues, we received those revised plans on August 4th, I have not a chance to review them. Marty, would you like to just kind of briefly describe the application? We did get one letter from an attorney, Martin Finnegan, represents the property owner to the west, to the east, I'm sorry, the car dealership in opposition to the proposed cross-access.
Sure, absolutely, I'd be glad to address it. As Mr. Murphy has indicated, we did revise the site plan and resubmitted copies based on the previous reviews, the revisions were fairly minimal. What they included were, we have indicated in the plans, and we now have a detailed indicated for the oil separator and sand and grit interceptor system. It is a system that's designed at 10 gallons per minute flow, so it's a more than adequate for the flow requirement for the site. We also note that the building will be engineered and will include its own internal equipment, which is part of the actual car wash equipment, not part of the site, especially part of the building engineering, and that will also be submitted along with this to Suffolk County Health Department for review and approval prior to us getting a building permit. The other items that were indicated on the plan were a brief revision to, let me just see if I can get this on the screen here. I'm gonna see if I can share this, but if not, I can just go through it by item. I don't see a way to share it, so I'm gonna just turn it off. Okay? All right, so I turned that off, because I wasn't able to share the site plan. But the other items that we did on the site plan were, the building configuration changed slightly, we didn't change it in terms of exceeding the threshold of a type-two action. We were, right now, I mean, I think it increased by like 15 square feet, but basically, the site plan changed configuration in order to just accommodate the proper dimensions for mechanical, there's a bump out on the front corner and a bump out on the back corner, that's really more of a logistical thing in terms of the building engineering. With that bump out, we then relocated the loading area adjacent to the dumpster, which is a much more appropriate location for it. We have the legal required area for that, we indicated where the onsite water well was going to be for irrigation, and we also changed the landscaping in the triangular area, they wanted a lawn, they liked the lawn, the look of the grass, so we're actually gonna use turf rest, it'll be, actually be a synthetic material, will not require maintenance or watering, but will give the appearance of a lawn. The other items that are on the plan is, we did include a copy of the retaining wall, which exactly mimics the retaining wall that is on the adjacent property on the car dealership side, it's the same exact type of wall, the same appearance. Lastly, the other changes we had is we did add a parking, not a parking stall, but we added a turnaround area at the end of the vacuum base that will be striped not to allow parking, but that will allow somebody who pulls in or uses the vacuums and goes that direction, there's no parking beyond that, so that gives them a place to turn around if they do not have one of the vacuum stalls available. Of note, with that, there really is no reason for them to go beyond that point, so at that driveway, what we've also then done is we've put in do not enter signs, because that's really the area that if somebody exits the wash, they decide not to go through the car wash, they would be looping around and pulling out past the vacuum stations and onto Glassky Street. Lastly, we, we really have shown now no clear cross-access easement, that was a discussion with the town board, when we had the special permit hearing that was brought up, we have no need for cross-access easement, it's actually a little bit worse of a situation for us, because we like the fact that with the drive-through. because we like the fact that with the drive-through, they have basically the three queuing lanes. And if you decide not to get a wash, you pull out and loop around. So you're pulling out, coming down out of the wash, making a turn to go out. There would be no reason for you to make a right and go through the, any type of an easement. Also, both of the properties, the Volkswagen property as well as this property, have multiple frontages. And one of the things that's in the state building code is a requirement for adequate access for emergency purposes. The requirements for that are greatly driven by the amount of legal right-of-ways that are available to a property for emergency access. We do have frontage on 58. We have Plasky Extension and Plasky Street. So we have three frontages, two of which have both ingress and egress, two-way curb cuts, one on Plasky Extension and one on Plasky. So there's more than adequate circulation for emergency vehicles. And God forbid, they needed to, believe me, I know the fire department would pull a quint right over the front grass and pull right into the front of the building if need be. We really do feel that the access, cross-access easement is not ideal in this situation. We understand cross-access easements as they work. I use them frequently when I shop on 58. This is not a location where that's really relevant because it's really a destination location for somebody to get their car done and then leave. The only possible reason they could utilize a cross-access would be to cut through the parking lot to make an egress onto 58 eastward. But they don't have to because they can pull out on Plasky Extension, go right down to the light and make a left, and go eastward. So there's really no need for it. And we certainly, we prefer not to have it, and we understand the adjacent owner prefers not to have it, not meaning that there wouldn't be language in a resolution indicating that there is a cross-access easement recorded, but not built in this way down the line, 15 years, whatever. If the use is changed, it would be the opportunity for the cross-access easement to be included at that time. So that's really our summary of basically where we are. And Charles, I don't know if you were going to add anything, or if our traffic engineer was online. I don't see him here if he was going to add anything. But that's all we have to present at this time.
What are the proposed hours of operation?
The hours of operation? We had it based on a 10-hour day, based on our flow requirement. Usually, you know, they do start fairly early in the morning. I believe that they usually are up and running by around 7:00. I know when I use the other car wash locally, I tend to get there early before I go into work. And they do run sometimes into the early evening for people getting out of work to be able to go there. I do not have any established, or I'm not aware of, any established hours at this point. I am not aware of any hours. I don't know if there's anybody else in attendance on the owner's side that would have any further information on that.
Just for the planning board's information, the request for the cross-access from this property owner is coming from the chief fire marshal for emergency purposes only, which would consist of a bollard and a chain. The car dealership to the east is part of their site plan approval. As I recall, it was a requirement of their site plan approval that they do provide cross-access. I don't think anybody at this point is looking at having cross-access for retail or the car sales coming through this property, or vice versa. But again, for emergency purposes, in the event that the fire department needs it, the chief fire marshal is asking for the emergency cross-access between the two properties.
It looks like from the plan that there's something that is built already on the car dealership.
That is correct.
And so what would then, would this be a chain for the cross?
What we had indicated on the current site plan was just to make, just to leave the curbs, you know, leave, there would be curbs there. It would not be an asphalt drive-through. Leave the curbs and make them a mountable curb, which has the two-inch lip and then the four-inch 45, back to a two-inch lip on top, so it would be a mountable curb. And if anything, putting the paving stones between the two curbs that allow grass to grow, they're called drivable pavers. They actually allow grass to grow. So it would be a landscaped area, would not be anything that anybody using the property would perceive as a cross-access. I don't even know if there would be the need for a barrier there because it really is a curb line with grass. There would be no reason for anybody to pull over it. And we minimized the width of it because there is an existing light pole on the car dealership property. So we only made it basically a 12-foot-wide area that would have a drop curb. It doesn't need to be a full 24-foot wide because it's not two-directional anymore. It could just be a minimal drop curb with a landscaping between. That would be a clear delineation for the emergency vehicles where they could jump the curb if they needed to.
How would this be advantageous to the fire department, really?
I am not a fire personnel, so I cannot answer on their behalf other than they would like to have the availability that if our truck gets into a situation, like they get to the end of the building, they don't have to back the truck up. They have forward means of access. They do not like backing trucks up during, for any emergency purposes whatsoever. This gives them another opportunity for, you know, traversing properties in a forward motion rather than having to back up.
So, you know, obviously, it has to meet the fire marshal's approval. And that's what we're going to require, that whatever they have proposed here, that he signs off on it. But, you know, we have to look at it, you know, this part of Route 58 is highly traveled. The area backs up with traffic very frequently. It's a very busy intersection. And, you know, worst-case scenario, if this place was packed with cars and it was a full or summer weekend where all the apple pickers and pumpkin pickers were out and it was just loaded into capacity, an event happened, that's typically why the fire marshal looks for other ways to access the property. So I know, just by example, the BJ's gas station that we approved last year on Ostrander and 58. Everybody assured us that the traffic was going to be fine, and it's a major traffic hazard right now.
Yeah, people back.
And, you know, we look at it on site plan, and the engineers say that the traffic is fine, but they got the cheapest gas in town, and the cars are trying to turn in there, and you can't even make a turn onto Ostrander Avenue. It's that bad. So, again, looking at it on a site plan, it's quite different when, you know, it's a busy, busy situation and heavy traffic. So, but again, as long as it meets the fire marshal's approval, you know, I would be okay with it, and I think the board would be okay with it. Marty, the oil separator that you added?
Yes.
Oil, where is that exactly located within the building?
If you look at the revised site plan, it basically comes out of the side of the building toward the queuing lines. And then it runs along the, basically, under the queuing lines.
I see.
Angles over into a manhole. That then would pick up the sanitary from the building and this gray water from the separator, and then have a single line leading out to the mean at the street.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, excuse me, Marty, I'm just curious. I love the fact that you're putting the artificial turf grass in. We've actually been discussing that. Why aren't you doing it everywhere? Why are you doing sod in the front?
In the landscaped area?
Yeah.
You know, there's, was a concern about, you know, water independence and, you know, fertilizers, et cetera. I've used that on, I haven't used it in this instance. I've actually used it on a couple of residential properties, believe it or not, for somebody that had a pretty high-end backyard, and they didn't really want to have to deal with it. And it basically looks like a beautiful lawn that never needs to be cut, never is brown, and never needs to be...
Grab, say, why don't you do that in the front also?
Yeah.
If I could address that, that request to put landscaping in that area, there is, or I believe there's a code requirement. I don't know if it's a guideline, I don't have the code in front of me, to have street trees. He doesn't have the room along the Plasky Street side, opposite of the detention basin, to put street trees in there.
Okay.
So staff's recommendation was put those trees that normally would have been required along there and put them in that triangle area. Not just to have turf or just a flat area. There needs to be, between that building and the road, there's like no landscaping. It's all hardski. So staff was looking for some way to increase, have they have to provide some sort of landscaping, not artificial landscaping, but real landscaping trees, something to help soften that hardski. That's a large area of hardski. So Marty, did you hear that?
Yeah, actually, one of the things that's a little bit different here, though, that I think really supersedes that requirement is that there is a small retainage along Plasky Extension also because of the grading of the new parking area. So there, there is a low retaining wall, only a couple of feet high, but it will have plantings in front of it along the entire length of Plasky Street. So it actually will be a planted area with landscaping directly adjacent to the street, which is where it's more appropriate. I think from Plasky Extension, if you look that way, with us having a retaining wall and where you are seating, you're not even going to see the front of the building where the landscaping is. You're probably going to pick up the building at about a quarter to a third of the way up the elevation where you're at that location. So if there was any landscaping in that area, you would not see it from Plasky Extension because of the low retaining wall and the landscaping along Plasky Extension.
What we're looking for, Marty, is some vertical integration of plant material, not just have a flat, you know, surface area between Plasky Street all the way to the building.
Okay, what we could do, Jeff, is we could add something in there. We do want it to be low, but we could add some plant. We could do a combination, if you'd like. I could come along the sidewalk that's out by the other parking area where the vacuum stations are, and I could do low planting there, which will run parallel to Plasky Extension at that location.
All right. We can have this conversation at a later time, but...
Yeah. Yeah, but we'll, you know, whatever, when we have one more review of this, we can get some, a couple of options to you, and whatever you decide you want to include, we can include that on the MyLar. That wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, so let's get to the public. Anybody on the line from the public that wants to comment or have questions? Is there anybody on there that's...
I see Martin Finnegan, who represents the neighbor to the east. Martin, can you hear us? Martin, you got to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm here, I'm sorry. I have a little trouble unmuting. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to confirm. I've heard a lot of back and forth about the cross-access. Obviously, that is the principal concern of Riverhead Poo, Riverhead Bay, the Volkswagen dealership next door. And it sounds like the board is amenable to the suggestion of the applicant that we leave it for emergency only. We have obviously submitted comments about this and our concerns about it in terms of the customers of the dealership and the safety concerns and what opening it would mean for that. So if there's any other questions that the board has about those concerns, I'd like to address them. If the board is okay with keeping it closed or limiting it as suggested to just emergency access, then you can, that would be okay.
Okay, so we don't really have to discuss that today. We're going to wait for the fire marshal, but it's really public comments that we're after tonight. But we did receive your letter, and we understand your position. I see another hand waving up there. I don't know if you can unmute that person.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you're on.
Peter Gordon, 1020 Parkway Street, Riverhead. I must have missed part of this when it was originally...
I heard some background noise going on. Can you... Is that better? Yeah. No.
You gotta turn it down or off completely.
Either that, or you have two mics going.
You have two devices.
He must have the phone on. Okay, sorry about that. Better? Yes.
Now we can hear you.
Good, good.
The entrance and exit is going to be where?
They're all going to be on Plasky Street or Plasky Street Extension across where the detention bond is, owned by the town.
So the entrance is on Plasky or Plasky Extension?
Both.
Both.
Both. And how many feet are there from the street to the actual car wash entrance itself?
I have to fucking find a measure of that.
Marty, do you have a scale that you can answer that question?
Yeah, one thing I could tell you is that the...
Approximately.
The building itself is 120 feet long, and we are...
Where does my car enter the car wash?
The car wash, actually, what happens is you pull in off of Plasky Street or Plasky Extension. There is a driveway parallel to Plasky Street. You then turn northward into a driveway that is parallel to the property line to the Volkswagen dealership. At that point, it goes into three queuing lanes that can each accommodate eight cars. So it can accommodate up to 24 cars queuing, waiting...
Queuing.
Meaning waiting to get a wash. They then go to a kiosk. They enter their information. When it's their turn, the gate opens. They drive around, and they actually do a 180, and they enter the car wash from the north, heading south. So they actually enter the car wash on the 58 side. And then they exit again on the Plasky side next to that driveway. And they do exit on Plasky or turn, pull into the parking lot to use the vacuum station.
Is there going to be a light up put in there?
A what? I'm sorry.
A traffic light put in there?
No, no, there's no...
Okay, because right now, there's a stop sign on the westbound lane of Plasky Street. There's a stop sign across on the eastbound side of Plasky Street, on both sides of the extension. There is no stop sign on the extension going on to Plasky Street itself.
Right.
Is that going to remain?
That will remain.
Okay, so people are blowing through those stop signs now. Because I live around there, and I'm there quite often. We also have a situation with trucks from the Honda dealership and more with Riverhead Building Supply coming around those turns there. So I think it's very hazardous. Okay? I know there's 24, you're telling me there's 24 spots for staging. I just feel that it's going to be a major problem there. And plus, we have another car wash on the other side of the street at the Exxon Mobil Station, and cars are making turns to go in there also. I think we're going to have a problem on Plasky Street and on 58 trying to get on there. We also have tractor-trailers coming in there and using that turn, which is a tough turn from the extension onto Plasky from the Volkswagen dealership. There's a truck parked on that street almost every day unloading and loading cars. And my concern is that even with the 24-car staging area, there's going to be traffic backed up onto the streets.
This is the third car wash in a two-mile radius.
Well, I'm sorry, we can't have more than one person speak. Carissa, did you get this resident's name and address?
I did.
Okay. If somebody else is speaking, can they identify themselves, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm his wife, Kathy Gata.
Okay.
How are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's the great car wash.
Okay, so you're on the record as being opposed to the project because you think it's going to add to a traffic issue that already exists?
I think it's a horrible idea.
Okay, so your comments are part of the record, and we thank you for participating.
Is there anything we can do to assist in having this not come about?
You've already done it. You're on the record as being opposed to it, and the board will consider your comments when they vote on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think somebody else was raising their hand, too.
Yeah, the gentleman with the beard, I can't read.
Larry, is that Larry Oxman?
It looks like him.
Looks like Larry.
Is that Larry Oxman?
It is, can you hear me?
Yeah, you got a different name on the screen.
I know, it's my life. Um, I don't have a comment, but the telephone number down, 516-738-1477, is Walter Dunn, the traffic engineer. So if he could be unmuted, he could probably address those comments.
Thank you, I'm on, am I unmuted now?
You are.
Good, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you for first, Marty, I think you did an excellent job of being a traffic agent tonight, too. tonight, too, better than I can do anything. So, so I, I think there's a couple of things that we did here that we've gone over that are very significant. You know, one of the things we do is we look to see what the anticipated amount of traffic is that'll be entering and exiting the site. And we did that through the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Report. And we did it when we, we put together initial traffic impact study, when we made a revision again back in 2019, February 2019, and also when we responded to some comments from the planning department back in October 11, 2019. And, and what we showed now with the, the change, the slight change in the size of the building, we looked to see much, how much traffic would be generated again by this size building. And it showed that there would be 28 vehicles entering the site and 28 vehicles exiting the site during the AM peak hour, the PM peak hour, and the Saturday peak hour. Now, now what that means with two driveways, that if, if they split equally, that would mean you'd have 14 vehicles entering and exiting at each of those two driveways. And that's why we put in the multiple driveways to break up the slower traffic into several points and to avoid the congestion that could occur otherwise. So if you look at 14 vehicles exiting, that means that you have four vehicles that are gonna, one vehicle that's gonna exit every four minutes, or one vehicle that's gonna enter every four minutes. And, and that, as you can see, is not a large amount of traffic. In fact, the state P O T looked at it, they would not require a traffic impact study 'cause it's such a low volume. And the second thing we did, as, as was pointed out by, I believe Jeff also, was that one of the key parts of the access plan here is that we have no access points on County Road 58, where it was pointed out the traffic is considerably heavier than on Plaski Street Extension or Plaski Street. So we believe we come up with a good design. We also looked at the, the situation of recognizing that we have stop signs coming out of the driveway where people have to stop. So they have to look to see the amount of traffic coming in. And, and we also did traffic counts out there during the AM, PM, peak hours during the summertime when traffic is heavier. This was, I guess, about two years ago. And, and it showed that even with the traffic flow, that we did have no backups coming back from the traffic light heading southbound, so that there was any backups in the northbound flow of traffic. Despite the traffic, the fact that traffic does exist in the area, we showed that the levels of service, which is a term that traffic engineers use like a report card that shows the level of service are A at both the access points and both at the intersection of Plaski Street or Plaski Street Extension, and at the signalized intersection across from Riverhead Center. So we think that we, we've looked at the concerns that were just expressed and that we, we've handled them as best as had to be done. And we showed that we're at excellent levels of service as a result, and we're not having a high generation of traffic that's, that's coming out of like a Riverhead Center. So, so we think it's appropriate, all the advantages and the disadvantages that result here with the roadway improvements, with the, with the driveway designs, that can accommodate it and overcome the concerns that were mentioned. That in a nutshell, I guess, is what I wanted to say. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to try and answer.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to comment? If you could raise your hand. And unmute yourself, anyone else?
I would like to just say something. I'm Robert Esnar. I work, actually represent the owner of the dealership. And Anthony Morrow is also sitting in, he runs the dealership. I just wanted to say one thing based on the comments about the cross-access agreement. We had a dealership there before there was really any cross-access activity at all 'cause there was a different kind of retailer on our west side and a house on the west side, on the west side where the, the car wash is supposed to be. And when the Chipotle restaurant was installed, part of that plan was to have a cross-access agreement. We really did not understand what that meant in the sense of the impact it would have on us. And so what has happened is there are people trying to cut through our parking lot, which is really not a parking lot. Our, our parking area is really a store. It's like the inside of a, of a store. People come there and did come for many, many years, and I think in most dealerships, they come and they look inside and they looked outside, sometimes even when the buildings are closed, they're there. And so to have cars just come and go trying to cook, short-circuit to get to Lowe's or to get to, to the restaurant has been a problem for us. And when it became clear to us, we have no problem with the, the adjacent property becoming a car wash, that's fine, it's okay, makes sense, we're all, it's a business activity on a business street. But the, the ability of a car to cut through that property, our property, to get to Lowe's or to a restaurant and avoid two traffic lights is too much of a problem in the sense that people will do it and it will really become a hazard and a problem for our business and a problem for killing people. So we think this proposal is a very good accommodation in the sense that, yes, all right, there's a reason for emergency vehicles, fine, but not to have somebody just casually going through and becoming a potential hazard for our customers and for the people of Riverhead. So we support this idea in every respect. The only problem we had was the cross-access agreement and this is an accommodation. And so it was kind of an implied statement that we accepted, the cross-access agreement. We had no idea what it would ma, mean, and it is a significant thing for us to have it and to not have it, and so we support this. I just wanted to say it even stronger than, than the way Martin, our attorney, did. And so we thank the board if they do approve it this way.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wanna raise their hand and speak from the public?
I just have a question.
I have this one in the top right.
Yeah, I just wanted to react to what the gentleman who just spoke said. He said that he had no problem with, with the car wash being open. It's a business being run on business area, something to that effect. And I just wanted to make a comment that if that's so, then the business which is on Route 58 should have its entrance and exit on the business road, Route 58, not on a side street, Plaski Street, which runs through residential areas and a park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanna reiterate...
Your name, just your name for the record, sir?
Anthony Morrow. I run the Volkswagen Subaru dealership adjacent to the proposed car wash. Just reiterating what Bob says, I'm, I'm there every day. I see cars fly through the lot going from our store into the Chipotle lot quite often. It is kinda dangerous. They do go through pretty fast and if, we're concerned that if that was opened, as far as easement goes, they would go directly across all the properties over to Chipotle and into Lowe's to get across traffic or whatnot. So just wanted to reiterate that. I do agree with, you know, the proposer, with the proposal, and I think that should be okay.
Okay, thank you. Top, top right again.
Hello?
Yep, you're on.
Hi, I'd like to say something.
Your name?
My name is Elizabeth Denseski. I was born and raised in Riverhead, and I've seen it progressively get worse, to be honest with you. Everybody's on top of everybody in this town. They hate to see a parcel go undeveloped. I understand, you buy, you wanna develop, great. We don't need three car washes, number one. I agree with the fellow that's sitting on the board, I don't know your name, sir, you're in the middle. I like the way you said we should start to rubber stamp a few things.
Start to...
Stop rubber stamping.
Right.
Let's stop, let's take a deep breath. Okay, BJ's is a disaster. You can't get in there, you can't get out of there when you try to get in, you're waiting on, on Ostrander Avenue. It's ju, it's a disgrace. And I know they did an impact study two years ago, like you said, with the coronavirus, everybody's moving out of the city, you've got more traffic coming out here. There, there is more traffic. Try to get on and off Route 58. It's just, it's pathetic what's happening to this town. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was, was Mr. Cuddy for this public hearing too or no? I saw his...
Yes, I, I just endorsed what Mr. Denseski indicated and also what Mr. Dunn had stated.
Okay, thank you. Joe, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, in your review, in your report, you had indicated that there were various, there was a house, garage, barn. Did they submit that as an existing plan?
Marty, I have not reviewed the revised plans. In his cover letter, he says he does, but I have not reviewed the revised plan to verify that...
Marty, do you wanna address that?
Yeah, is that the diagram that shows the existing structures and the proposed?
Where is that?
It's on the last page. We put it in on the, we did it as a separate diagram. I didn't wanna add the buildings on the site plan 'cause it gets too messy. I'm sorry, it's on the last page, just 1.3.
It's on sheet SP dash 1.3. Just second to that page.
You see of, of...
Marty, we got it.
The proposed plan with the building shaded in, the proposed building shaded in, and then you also see the existing barn, residence, and the sheds clearly denoted also as an overlay.
We found it.
I forgot to mention that when I mentioned the reader, I apologize.
Okay, any other public comments or questions from the board? Okay. You wanna move to close the public hearing? You wanna leave it open?
Yeah, I think we can close it.
I'll move, I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing on 1535 Route 58 LLC, Somal.
Second motion? Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for 1535 Route 58 LLC. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Just, so just for the public's information, we only closed the public hearing, we did not vote on the project tonight, so your comments are for, part of the record and they will be considered when we take this up for a final vote. Okay, next public hearing is Villas at Roanoke. We have, who was on there? It was...
Pete Shembry's there. Jerry's book was on. Mr. Cuddy, are you repr, are you here representing as well?
I'm ready. Do you like us to go ahead? I didn't know if Craig wanted to say anything.
I, I just wanna make sure we have everybody in the room. I know we've got Pete Shembry, if he wants to come on, and I believe Doug Adams is here for this applicant as well. Yeah. Uh, yeah, but if, Chairman, if you'd like them to start?
Yeah, let, who's gonna speak? Mr. Cuddy, are you gonna refer?
I am, yes. This is a 14-lot subdivision that the board has looked at for a considerable period of time. The south of this site is development rights sold and west of this site is development rights sold. We have added to the original yield an additional seven lots with TDRs and one additional lot is a result of the workforce housing. So we have 14 lots, and the 14 lots are in a configuration, a cluster configuration with open space of 3.3 acres. And we believe that it's an appropriate subdivision under the code. We have, as you know, a, an ability to increase the yield both in R40, in R840, and in R80 zone. And under the circumstances, we think that the board has looked at this for a considerable period of time, and it's a subdivision that is appropriate because what the applicants would like to do is to also sell this to the county so that development rights of this parcel would also be included and you would have a significant area of development rights in this part of the town. So our proposal right now is to get preliminary approval so that we can go ahead with the county, and that's why I'm with you tonight.
Okay. Are there any other comments by Jerry or Pete? Do you wanna add anything?
No, Mr. Cuddy, I believe, said basically where we're at. I, I did speak with the Fall Committee today and they're just in the process, the appraisals have been done, so we're hopefully gonna meet with them over the next week or so and go over that. And preliminary approval is a big part of the appraisal process for them.
Okay, great. Anyone from the public? Okay, a couple hands went up there, we'll take them one at a time. If you can unmute yourself, sir.
So hi, good evening. My name is Albert Hakim. I, we purchased the home at 903 Sound Shore Road, which is the private road that butts the, the proposed development site. And I'm also representing tonight my neighbor, Lenny Lombrano, who's at 907 Sound Shore Road, but Lenny is dealing with a crisis because of the power outage at his pizzeria, Lenny's Pizza. So both he and I are opposed to the subdivision as offered. He was under the impression, he's a longtime resident there, we're, we're there, we bought about two years ago. He was under the impression, as we were when we bought, that that area would be available for development in two-acre lots. We understand that, you know, developers are within their rights based on some of these considerations to develop more. We, we support the county purchasing the property, but we just wanna make the comment here, we live in Nassau County and buying in Suffolk County was our escape because, you know, we're on the south shore of Nassau County, we, we have 60 by 140 lots, there's no property. So we bought out in Suffolk County going, okay, now there's, there's real land here. This proposal brings Nassau County to Sound Shore Road. It's way too many homes, it's, it's too cluttered, it, it, it is, it will destroy the feel and the serenity of the area as it exists that all of our neighbors enjoy. And again, I'm speaking for myself and Mr. Lombrano.
Okay, thank you. I think the gentleman in the middle also, yep.
Unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yep, we got you now. Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Tom Hughes, and my wife and I own a seasonal home on Sound Shore Road at 24 North Walk. We have owned that home since the 1970s, and prior to that, the home was in my wife's Riverhead family going back to the 1930s. So we have some standing on Sound Shore Road. I thank you for this opportunity, and as Mr. Hakim mentioned, I too fear the consequences for Sound Shore Road if this project goes through. As you know, Sound Shore Road is a narrow, winding road with numerous blind hills, blind driveways. There are no sidewalks, there are no bike lanes. It's heavily used by residents who walk their dogs and ride their bikes. The town already recognizes these limitations because you require the trucks leaving the URT terminal must go west and not turn east to go through the residential community. Now, if these developers get their permission to build 14 new homes, I'll put the over and under at 25 more cars, and feel free to take the over because this will include additionally two years probably of construction vehicles turning in to Sound Shore Road, probably off Pier Avenue, and interfering with the town beach there as well. I would ask the planning board to defeat this. I hope the state or county will buy it, but otherwise, I would urge the developers to try and find a right-of-way access off of Sound Avenue to reach the property. This is what was used at Maidstone Landing and for the newly acquired preserve and should be explored for this property as well, although... probably off Pier Avenue, and interfering with the town beach there as well. I would ask the planning board to defeat this. I hope the state or county will buy it, but otherwise, I would urge developers to try and find a right-of-way access off of Sound Avenue to reach the property. This is what was used at Maidstone Landing, and for the newly acquired preserve, and should be explored for this property as well, although I oppose it in principle, and hope that the county can step in. My second point has to do with the aesthetics. I'm proud to live in the hamlet of Northville. It is not Roanoke. As you know, Roanoke Avenue does not go to Northville. Roanoke is a long-established geographical and nautical landmark of the town of Riverhead. It's not in Northville. I'm sure their branding people could have come up with, you know, Northville Farms, or Northville Fields, or the Villas on Sound Shore, but the developers would say, well, we're not on the shore. Well, you're not in Roanoke either. So for those two reasons, I oppose this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anyone else from the public? Any other comments? Okay.
I'd just like to make sure that once we get, if we go further into preliminary, that we see building envelopes on the lots, because of the slopes, et cetera, it'd be good to see where the building envelope, buildings or houses would go.
Well, there are some, I mean, we're going to have to have them back here, because there are some outstanding engineering issues, we have questions on, so they will be back at the table before this even comes up for a vote. Okay, if there's no other questions from the board or comments, we could close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing of Villas at Roanoke, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to public comment on resolutions. Is there anyone that's waiting to address the board on any resolution in front of us tonight? Anyone want to raise their hand, no comments? Okay, we'll take up the resolutions.
Make a motion that we move Resolution Number 44 for 836 East Main Street, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 44 for 836 East Main Street, granting final site plan approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also opposed, so I guess we'll take a vote on this. Member, George?
Oh, I'm okay with it.
Your vote is yes?
Yes.
There?
My vote is no, because I've said this before on other projects, I do not feel that having an apartment of 500 square feet is much too small, and that's why I'm saying no. I think they can make them larger.
Okay.
Aye.
Yes, Dennisewski?
Aye.
And I vote no. So the resolution passes three to two. Okay, Resolution 45.
I'll move Resolution 45, 1846 Edwards Avenue, for the, chapter 219, so moved.
Second in motion? Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 45 for 1846 Edwards Avenue, chapter 219. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is approved. 46.
I'll move Resolution 46, which is the administrative approval of site plan of wireless on Waiting, in Waiting River.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 46 for Verizon Wireless at Waiting River Four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
There's a comment on the record, because I still feel that on these varsity cell towers that the town needs to have, or the county needs to hire independent engineers to review it on their basis. And I think it's well worth it, just because we have people with Verizon, or with whomever, they're hired by the cell tower people, and so they're going to do, they're going to do what's necessary. Sometimes an independent review can help, and it's not an expensive deal, but I'm still, I'm still in favor.
Okay, so we have five yeses, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm move Resolution 47 for Verizon Wireless at Old Steeple Church, so moved.
Second in motion? Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 47, Verizon Wireless at Old Steeple Church. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is approved.
Make a motion to move Resolution Number 48, the Glass Residence, chapter 219, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 48 for chapter 219, Glass Residence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move Resolution Number 49, which is an application of Riverhead Town Homes, pursuant to a secret, and circulated for lead agency, and involve, and involve.
Second in motion?
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 49 for Riverhead Town Homes, for the secret review. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution's approved.
Make a motion to move Resolution Number 50 for HK Ventures, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 50, which is a positive declaration for HK Ventures. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is approved.
Move Resolution Number 51 for Hotel Indigo, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Comment and discussion? This was originally going to be on for a resolution of site plan approval, however, what we're going, what we'd like to do is introduce two separate resolutions.
We have them both.
There is two.
We have them both.
Right, so instead of approving Resolution Number 51, that's not going to be a resolution for approving the site by them.
Right.
And that's to be scheduled for the public hearing.
Okay.
So this might make it over. So every Resolution 51.
Okay. So, and you moved it, right?
Yep.
And did we have a second?
Second.
The motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 51, scheduling a public hearing for Hotel Indigo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution's approved. And we have 52, also for Hotel Indigo, which is for the unlisted action and lead agency.
I'll say, I'll, I'll move Resolution Number 52.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 52 for Hotel Indigo Secret, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is approved.
Mr. Chairman, just one clarification. John, you want to?
Resolution. For Resolution 2020 dash 05, 1846 Edwards Avenue, there is an error on the agenda, it's not to approve, it's for the secret determination.
Which one was that?
The second resolution on the agenda.
Number 45.
Edwards Avenue?
Yep, it's not to approve, it's for the secret determination. The resolution is, that was circulated, the secret is correct, it was just an error on the agenda, it should be declassified, secret, not to approve.
Okay, as noted. Thank you. Any public comments on any matter? I don't see anyone. Miss, did you have anything to say tonight? Okay, you're welcome.
Make a motion that we move the planning board minutes of July 16, 2020.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of July 16, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Minutes are approved. Just on the positive declaration for HK Ventures, are we going to hire a consultant for that?
Yes, I was going to do it for the next meeting, because I want to send you some material about it. I'd like to recommend to hire Tom Kramer, and I can send you his VDA resume to you. He's an experienced land use planner, he has a wealth of knowledge with environmental planning, he's either prepared, or has taken before, has reviewed them on behalf of other jurisdictions, and I have spoken with him about whether or not, what his workload is right now, and right now, his workload is relatively light, so he could undertake this endeavor, and give it a high priority in terms of his review. I also spoke with Frank Mancini from the Water District, to see whether or not he would like to have any assistance in the review of the water quantity and quality issues. From, I know that they use John Collins from H2M quite a bit, he said that, yes, that would be very helpful to him, because of the, not because of the lack of work knowledge, or it's because of workload, so that would help him out quite a bit, if we could retain him as well.
Retain who?
H2M.
I'm not so sure that that's a good idea.
Okay.
I agree that someone should be hired, but H2M is the town's consulting engineer on all water matters. So we should look to someone else.
Okay, that's fine, I wasn't worried.
And that's not a knock against them, I just think it's a conflict.
Okay, I know that other people have experience doing that sort of thing, so I'm going to seek out their expert advice, and some proposal of people that could do it for us.
The only thing I'm going to ask for, Jefferson, and I don't know if you or whoever we ultimately retained to do, to do this positive declaration is, timeline roadmap with all the milestones that we have to meet and the dates, because I know on past ones, there was a little bit of confusion as to, you know, the clock was ticking on certain portions, and when things had to be approved, and when the scoping and the hearings had to be, so I'd really like to have a timeline where, you know, where we have to approve, or take up certain actions.
And Greg has already done that, because the applicant was asking for the same thing. I think we'd have those milestones in terms of what the secret requirements are, and then plug in the planning board dates, to make sure that we get, you get enough lead time to review this material.
So those dates couldn't have been plugged in until tonight?
No, we could not. We gave them just like an estimated timeline, but not date specific.
Okay.
They haven't submitted anything, have they?
No.
No, not officially. They've, they know that this was coming, so they've been gearing up, doing their due diligence in terms of traffic and archaeological, so they're gearing up for it. So they'll be well-prepared, come the time that we, the next step is going to be schedule the scoping session.
So the positive declaration is going to be needed, you know, we'll post it to the ENB, we're, you know, we're going to adhere to those timelines. We will schedule a public scoping session, which will likely need to be held via Zoom, so we can do that, and then from there, once we have the public scoping session, it's in the, the ball is in the applicant's court, so to speak, to prepare the drafts, the draft scope.
Right, right.
Once we receive that draft scope, then that triggers a sort of timeline, in terms of when we need to turn around and review it, and do our part on it. So I will prepare a timeline utilizing certain milestones.
Now that you've got this kickoff date this evening, now we know where to plug in the time dates, you know, sequentially.
Anything else from the board? No, sure. Dick, I see you have the microphone in your hand, did you want to?
They gave me this.
You just hold me in?
Let's get a little karaoke.
Didn't know if you wanted to sing for us, or something.
It would be a bad day.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, have a good night. The next meeting is August 20th at 3:00 PM.
Have a nice weekend, everybody.